Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Chamber for tonight's City Council meeting and immediately following our Committee of the Whole Meeting, to be chaired by Alderperson Bruno. Our first order of business is to call the meeting to order, which I gladly do, and ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring? Bruno?
Here.
Ruby? Kilburg?
Here.
Kassarad? Maladra? Oh my God. Please hold. I'll go with Malaki.
Malaki, here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
All right.
Wow.
Sorry.
Coughlin. Wow. What the... Let's all straighten up here, for God's sake. We begin the council meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I'd like to invite our Superintendent Bob Van Gescam to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Maladra. Under Maladra. Our first order of business, ladies and gentlemen, under Item 3, Public Hearing Special Items and Presentations, is Item 3A to proclaim April 26, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Geneva. So moved. Motion by Marx, seconded by Pashke. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. And Not on Your Agenda is a special presentation tonight. I've taken the liberty of allowing this to occur and encouraging it to incur, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce to all of you the Chief Executive Officer of Aqua Backflow, Mr. Tom Storowski. Tom, welcome, sir.
I just appreciate you letting me come up. We've... Aqua Backflow's been working for the City of Geneva Water Department for roughly 14 years, and we help assist with the Cross Connection Control Program, which keeps the water safe from contamination. So we've been doing this with Bob and Mike, and we actually just wanted to... If you want to come up?
Mr. Van Gescam.
Yeah, Bob and Mike.
And Mr. Anderson.
Yes. So we literally work with hundreds of water purveyors across the country, and very seldom do we have people that have 100% compliance. And so Geneva regularly has 100% compliance, so we thought we would recognize the fact that you guys are doing a fantastic job and wanted to give you this award, just to show our appreciation, and I think the city appreciates it as well.
Absolutely, we do.
That you're doing everything you can to keep the water safe from getting contaminated. So I think it's...
Well, thank you.
Sure, I think it's well deserved, so... Congratulations. We'll have Adrian take a picture, too.
Sure.
Sure. Thank you. Nice job. I appreciate you.
Now, Mr. Van Gescam and Mr. Anderson, we were alerted to this surprise late last week.
Yes.
So I trust that neither of you were aware of this.
No.
But we thought it was appropriate to recognize you publicly for the extraordinary work you do. Oftentimes, the work you do is unknown, but it's very much appreciated, as both of you should feel and know. And Tom, of course, puts the punctuation mark on this recognition.
Right.
So we are delighted that you're part of the team. We're proud of what you do.
Yeah.
Any comments you'd like to share? What is backflow?
Well, it's something that you don't want.
That's right.
Ergo, the compliance. Yes. It's for businesses and residents who have certain devices that we wanted to make sure that it's protected, so it doesn't backflow into the water supply and contaminate it. So Mike is the leader of this program, and he works nonstop, and no kidding, on making sure that we have compliance. So this is really an award for his effort, but we work together, but he's done a lot of work on it.
Yeah, and he doesn't get the recognition, because we were just talking earlier that your water customers hate him, because he says, "You got to get this done," and they're saying, "Why?" And he's got to educate them, tell them what it is, and it's not an easy task, so...
And Mr. Anderson, any words? Can you share with us how long you've been with our team?
A little over 23 years now.
Isn't that something?
Yeah. Yeah, it goes fast.
It does go fast.
Yes. But most of the time, the job is extremely enjoyable, rewarding. I enjoy working for the city very much, but unfortunately, this is one of the not-so-fun jobs, where a lot of times, the public does not like you very much, because you have to be very persistent. But it is very necessary. The cross-contamination can be very dangerous to not only individuals, but you can pass it down the line to other water customers, so it's very important.
Now, is it just me, or do you guys look almost identical?
That's possible.
You could be brothers.
I don't know why.
Yeah, I learned it from Bob.
That's what happens in the water department.
Is that what happens in the water department? Yeah. You guys showed up, you looked like Pete Collins originally, now you look...
Yeah.
No disrespect, Pete.
Yeah.
And our city clerk said that you guys remind her of the two guys in The Muppet Show.
Yeah.
Isn't that what you said?
I did not.
That was Maladra.
Maladra.
That was Maladra. Well, we are very proud of both of you, and thank you for the important work.
I have to say, thank you guys for your support, all of our staff and elected officials, because without the ordinances to help support us to do this, we couldn't do it. So that also helps. So thank you.
We're very proud. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. Well deserved. Thank you.
And also, on a high note, Not on Your Agenda, please join me in congratulating our very own Director of Public Works, now a grandpa twice, for the safe and beautiful delivery of your grandson, Aiden, not even a week ago. So congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Very exciting. Aiden is here tonight. Okay. Amendments to the agenda? Are there any amendments this evening by any member of the council? Item 5 is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. All those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Pashke. The clerk will take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
That's it.
With eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and...
Seven. Yeah. I should have played, sorry.
Ruby?
Aye.
You doing okay?
That's eight now.
We're going to slow things down for the clerk. With eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two alderpersons absent, the Omnibus Agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to Item Number 8, Municipal Bills for Payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate.
Municipal bills for payment total $1,571,486.86.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council packet and on the city website.
Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available in the City Council members' packets and on the city's website. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderperson Mayor. City clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malaki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye. The bills have been approved for payment by this council with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two alderpersons absent. We jump to Item 11, Public Comment. This is a chance for anyone joining us this evening to share with us your thoughts. It is your turn to speak, our turn to listen. The floor is open. Yes. You have to come join us at the podium, please. If you'd be so kind to share your name with us, and if there's a challenge in spelling, spell your last name for the record. It's good to see you.
My name is Chris Pacon. P-E-A-S-N-Paul, AKA N. I received these emails, neighborhood something or other. Most of the time, I just ignore them, but today, I received one regarding the Duke &amp; Lee property, criticism of Emma's Landing management, and something... Basically, what I want to know is, is there someone... The Burton Foundation. Is there someone for me to talk to, to fill me in on what's been going on, or what's the status of the Duke &amp; Lee property? Anyway, I just got it today. I didn't have time to do any... Well, anyway, you have any suggestions?
I'd be happy to speak with you if you'd like. Do you have my cell?
No.
I'd be happy to rattle it off if you'd like.
I'm sorry, wait.
I'd be happy to share with you now if you'd like.
Okay. 742-8916.
That's correct.
Oh!
Shoot me a text, give me a call.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Olson.
Just wanted to bring you guys abreast, just a few things that the chamber is doing. In two weeks, we have the Coffee Crawl, which is on April... Saturday, April 19th. We've got 30 retailers that are going to be offering coffee creations for 350 folks, should we sell out. We usually do, so we'll have 350 people roaming downtown Geneva on that Saturday. We have found some great success with some changes that we've made to the program. We used to have just a smaller number of vendors, and people tried their hardest to hit everybody, and thus, didn't really have time to enjoy each stop, learn about it. We've increased the number of stops to 30 stops. You just simply can't get 30 cups of coffee in you, so people are being selective as to where they are going, and we are finding much greater results as a result of it. The people are going in, spending time in the businesses that are participating, and enjoying the event much better. So it's been an improvement as to how we've been handling that. The weekend right after that is Geneva's Citywide Garage Sale. This is open to everybody in town. If you want to clean out your closet, garage, whatever, all you've got to do is contact the chamber. We will have digital maps, a map that you can then also print, so that you can then go find the treasure that's somebody else's junk. Just another quick little comment that the chamber does have going on this Thursday, on the 10th. We've got a seminar for non-for-profits on how to better utilize data and collecting data, and how to process that. So that's something that is also available. Just go to the chamber website, Events for Members, and it's on the 10th. Now, I'm going to change my hat a little bit and talk to you about the Friends of the Viking Ship. For those of you that are not aware, there was a... The first Viking longship in roughly 1,000 years was constructed in 1892, and in 1893, it was sailed straight across the Atlantic Ocean by 12 brave souls for the Columbian Exposition going on in Chicago that year. Since 1996, that artifact has been here in Geneva. There's been many attempts to try and give the ship a permanent indoor home, and it has never been successful, until last week. Last week, the Friends of the Viking Ship, we purchased property here in downtown Geneva for the express purpose of constructing a museum to house and preserve the ship. The property is located at 101 Hamilton. It's the northwest corner of Hamilton and First Street, so it will also be a good addition to the north side of our business district. For those of you that have never seen the ship, we have our first open day on the 19th, the same day as the Coffee Crawl, so please head out to Good Templar Park and see this lovely boat that has so much history, and it really is something exciting. We have docent-led tours that go on every 15 minutes, from 10:30 till 4:00 on Saturday, the 19th. So please come by. Don't forget your small donation, because we need lots of money, and enjoy the ship. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
This would be our third Arbor Day that we have been up here and talking to you all. I find it interesting that you no longer read the proclamation as you have in the past, and I'd like to highlight a portion of it for you that was not read. Be it resolved that I, Kevin Burns, Mayor of the City of Geneva, do hereby proclaim April 25, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Geneva, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and everyone to plant trees and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Do I really need to point out the hypocrisy related to the MIF development, or is it evident to you all? We were vilified by some of you on this council for doing exactly what this proclamation calls for. I had no interest in TIFs, FOIAs, or letters to the AG initially, but look where we are All we asked for was a conversation with MIF about the possibility of relocating one building to save trees that were here before Geneva existed. During the process, it was discovered that witness trees had already been destroyed on adjoining city land several years before, and this was due to ineffectual oversight by the city. The excuse that the conversation couldn't be done with MIF because it was in the county and not annexed just doesn't hold water. There were plenty of conversations with the developer, which is obvious. The city's website, and it was being marketed by the Economic Development Director. I was actually told by Kareem Pyrog that Kevin told her that he heard from MIF that some people were being rude to them in calls and emails, and perhaps we could tone down the rhetoric. This was said in front of three people. Also, doesn't the fact that the developer cut these trees down and then promptly came in for annexation show you they had no interest in being a good neighbor, or they really didn't care what the people of Geneva thought? Because there was quite a hue and outcry about this entire thing, as I'm sure you all remember. A collaborative approach could have saved us all a lot of time. However, what I've seen in the last several years is that circling the wagons, attacking the public, as well as other council members, who don't go along with the preferred narrative, seems to be the norm in these meetings. Even people with another point of view deserve respect from our public servants. So my opinion, the lack of interest in pursuing our simple, simple initial request shows me that this proclamation isn't worth the paper that it's written on. If not sooner, we'll see you in a year.
Anyone else? If not, we'll transition to new business. Members of the council, the floor is yours. Anyone with new business? Oh, yes, sir. Alderperson Bruno.
Thank you. Couple of things I wanted to bring up as my term wanes. First, is anyone interested... It always bugs me coming in from the east at night. It seems like we're missing an opportunity to illuminate Geneva and the Water Tower, just as kind of an entry thing. If there's interest on the part of the council, we might direct staff to research the cost of some subtle illumination there.
Are you talking about by Harrison?
Yeah, the one by Harrison Street School, the Water Tower.
Oh, by Harrison, not by Comforted?
Yeah, Harrison.
Harrison, got it. I think Bob's taking notes. I think Mike Anderson, you got a flashlight? You're going to put it there.
I'll head over there after I leave.
The other thing, too, is I've been wanting to bring this up for a while, but some years ago, the ordinance was changed to allow liquor license holders to hold office, and it's always bothered me with the conflict of interest. You know, we do city stings on businesses that serve liquor. City council people vote on liquor licenses. If there's interest on the part of the council, I'd like to see an agenda item to just have that discussion anew.
Without objection, we can certainly invite City Minister Dawkins and...
Chief Passerelli.
Chief Passerelli and our city attorney to do exactly that.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderperson Malaki.
I just wanted to applaud our police staff and everybody. I was out of town, but I heard there was a big event over the weekend where there was a large amount of people in town, and from what I saw on the news, that, you know, it was fairly, you know, well-behaved from everybody that was in our town visiting, and I just wanted to give the chief and everybody a round of applause for providing a safe space for people to come and do what they did.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Alderperson Ruby.
Thank you. I know it hasn't been a long time, but I'm just curious if there's any feedback from IDA.
No update.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting is in order. Motion by Marx. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will just take a moment to transition to the Committee of the Whole Meeting, being chaired by Alderperson Bruno. Microphones are turned off.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Monday, April 7, 2025. I'm Alderperson Mike Bruno. I represent what is currently the First Ward, along with Alderperson Bowring. Please, we'll say everyone's in attendance, with the exception of Alderperson Bowring and Alderperson Kassarad. First item of business, approve Committee of the Whole Minutes from March 17, 2025. Kilburg, Mayor. Any discussion? All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Items of business, 3A, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of a Proposal to Bind Coverage for Property, General Liability, Automobile, Public Officials' Employment Practices, Law Enforcement, Crime, Cyber, Excess Liability, and Workers' Compensation Insurance in the Amount of $951,525. Do I have a motion?
No.
Moved by Pashke.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor. Any discussion? Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Dawkins?
So for the committee's consideration this evening is the city's commercial insurance package renewal. The renewal would maintain the city's existing coverages and limits with minimal changes, the most notable exception being the city's property deductible would increase from $5,000 to $10,000. The renewal, which is an 8% increase over expiring, is in large part driven by the increased value of the city's fleet, construction costs, utilization of drones, and claim activity. The market for public entities, however, continues to be impacted by property losses, construction costs, cyber attacks, and storm damage. Staff will continue to work with the city's broker to reduce exposure by removing newly-declared surplus vehicles and seek premium credits where warranted. If you do have additional questions, they can be addressed either to Assistant City Administrator McCready, or our brokers with us this evening, Rich Stokluskas.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Alderperson Pashke.
No questions. I just wanted to highlight the safety grant. That looks like it was an increase over the last five years, attesting to the city's strong commitment to safety and risk management practices. So thank you to city staff for getting us there.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments?
Can we have Representative Gallagher here this evening? Can we do it?
We do.
I didn't wish you coming on here without having an opportunity to introduce yourself to the camera.
There you go. Rich Stokluskas with Arthur Gallagher. Been here several times before. It was, as Stephanie had mentioned, a very standard, straightforward renewal. What we're seeing for the last three quarters consistently is cities, townships, villages, roughly in that 7% to 9% increase range. And where that's coming from is some inflationary rate increases, some exposure increases, meaning your vehicles are going up, property values are going up, your payrolls are going up, things like that, and then based on your loss history. So overall, you're on the lower end of that range. I've had one account that was less than the 7%, and one that was over the 9%, but that's really what we're seeing.
What was referenced in our executive summary, those references, were they specific to Geneva, or are they a reference to what's happening nationally?
I do most of my business in the Midwest, with probably about 70%, 80% in Illinois.
Okay.
So you have to take into consideration the jurisdiction that you're in, because when you go into Indiana, you go into Iowa, they have different tort amenities, laws, caps, and things like that. And like Iowa's got a lot more problems with property than Indiana does.
This is a point of reference. Can you reference any major claims that Geneva had over the past 12 months?
Not specifically... Yeah, not specifically in a public meeting, but I'd be more than happy to discuss them with you.
Could you give the category or the area where it might have fallen?
General liability.
Pardon me?
General liability.
General liability?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we did have a couple of property claims.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that unanimous? Is that considered unanimous? Yeah. Let's see. 3B, Consider Draft Ordinance Authorizing the Extension of Municipal Water Service to the Property Located at 1923 Western Avenue Without Annexation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx, seconded by who was over here? Pashke. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So Josh and Mary Lather, the owner of the property located at 1923 Western Avenue, have petitioned to connect to the City of Geneva's municipal water service, as the property is outside the city's corporate limits. The Illinois Municipal Code provides that corporate authorities of a municipality may provide by ordinance for the extension and maintenance of a municipal water main outside the corporate limits upon petition. Further, the corporate authorities may authorize such extension without requiring annexation. There were a couple of questions this evening that we posted to the website, so there were questions about whether they wanted to annex. Currently, no. There were questions about are there other properties? Currently, yes. And then also, we noted that there was a policy discussion by the City Council. Granted, it was in 2015, so it's been a while. That kind of the direction was not to require annexation, but certainly that policy can always be revisited. I do not see the applicants here, but we do have Director DeGroot, if you have any additional questions. But that's it.
Are there any comments or questions?
I guess I have one. As it would relate to annexation, this would... As it would relate to annexation, this would take on a sizable expense to the city as far as providing service to these areas.
We currently cannot provide sanitary service to these properties along Western Avenue, so that would be the biggest expense, would be getting that service to them. And then if they ever wanted to convert over to our electric utility, that would be an expense they would have to incur as well.
Okay. So as we look at annexation, probably the reason why we wouldn't be interested in taking it on would be the significance of the expenditure to the city to annex those areas.
I mean, I think it was 500, 400 or 500 feet we had to extend the sanitary line, so...
And that expense typically would be borne by the property owners, not the city, unless you negotiated a different...
Okay. So we have water mains then to those areas then, correct?
Correct. We're able to service these properties with water, but not with sanitary.
So then really, there isn't really anything prohibitive that would be keeping us from annexing those areas of the city that most people assume are a part of the city?
I don't know that there's anything that would prohibit it, no.
You know, I guess it would be interesting to survey those residents and see what their thoughts are as it relates to the annexation of those properties into the city of Geneva at some point in time in the future. I don't know what would be the most appropriate approach, but I think it's something that would be worth giving consideration to. I don't know what anyone else thinks in that regard.
I can add my comments?
Who's Mayor?
I mean, 500 feet of sanitary sewers, not nothing, and reconnecting to our utility would be costly as well, but we would get customers, so a cost analysis might be in order. But is that really useful?
We're getting sideways.
Okay.
Council has said we're getting sideways.
This is not an annexation discussion. It is a discussion about whether we wish to...
Serve or not.
Right.
All right. Thank you then.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And I would just note, for when this goes to the city council, the mayor will have the opportunity to vote as well, because it is a corporate authorities' vote, not just a city council vote.
Item 3C, consider draft ordinance proposing the establishment of special service area number 37, Geneva Crossing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx. Is that Pashki? Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So last October, the city council granted final plan unit development and final plot of subdivision approval for Geneva Crossing, a 40-unit townhome development along Stone Circle. The council also passed Resolution 2024-106, accepting the applicant's application to establish a special service area to finance the approximately $700,000 cost of providing and retrofitting electrical infrastructure to serve the townhomes. The proposed SSA would only apply to the project owners and future owners of the townhomes. So for your consideration, this evening is an ordinance to propose the establishment of the SSA, the maximum tax levy, the maximum interest rate, the term, and then it sets the date for a public hearing for July 7, 2025. And that public hearing date is based on statutory requirements about the length that you need to have from the time you set it to the time you have it. So again, we do have Director DeGroot with us, if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Alderperson Mayor.
Is this the first time we've used this for an electrical extension?
I believe so, yes.
Because I thought it was mostly used for stormwater drainage.
Stormwater, typically. That's correct.
Typically. So we're financing the services to these, to the townhomes by way of the SSA and pulling a bond to the SSA? Is that the gist of it?
Yeah. So at the property owner's request...
Ah, okay. All right.
We are doing this. Not at our request, but at their request, and yes, they will attempt to get a bond. It's not a large bond issuance, so they may have to look at something else, but that's what their proposal is.
That's what they're, okay.
And then it would become due and owing on the property tax bills just for those properties within that area.
So not onto the existing?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Alderperson Maliki.
I have a question. I don't know if Director DeGroot or Director Babica will be able to answer this. I just had a question about the difference between that Phase 3 and the Phase 1 service that was being discussed with this area. I apologize for getting too wonky.
I'm going to ask you to elaborate on that question.
So I was just trying to research back in the history of this and how it was, you know, planned out and discussed. Looks like originally it was like a Phase 3 installation, and the SSA is to retrofit or back to like a Phase 1 service for the infrastructure?
Correct. That was because the original concept for this buildout was to basically carbon copy the larger units, which have a higher energy requirement because of elevators and other internal heaters and chillers for those larger structures, whereas these are, well, they're residential-grade, adjoining structures.
Sure.
So they're from four to, I think, five-unit structures.
Is the Phase 3 already in place?
The Phase 3 is in place for the existing infrastructure.
Right.
So basically, what this project was, was larger, they were larger units, apartment-style, condo-style units, multiple units. And because of the size of them and because of the energy requirements, they needed a larger transformer to feed that energy. Because those final units, which was the outer ring, were never really built out, the developer has since reconfigured that to going with single-family attached units, and because they're single-family residential, they have a lower energy threshold. Therefore, they don't need the larger three-phase transformers. They can suffice and be serviced through residential-grade transformers.
Gotcha. Okay. And they just can't, they just can't use the stuff that's in place?
Correct.
Just, they don't want to, it's just because it's more power or whatnot?
It's not more power is how it's delivered with the phasing.
Sure.
Yeah. I mean, without really going down the rabbit hole on this one.
Yeah, I don't want to get too wonky.
It's just, it's not compatible.
Sure.
There's the word I was looking for.
Okay.
Compatible.
All right. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm going to hear about that from Aaron in the morning. I know.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3D, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Stewart Spreading Inc. in the amount of $30.72 per cubic yard for biosolids disposal from May 1, 2025 to April 30, 2026. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Pashki, Mayor, for the motions. Ms. Dawkins?
So the wastewater treatment plant produces roughly 3,500 cubic yards of biosolids annually. Land application to farm fields is the most economical way to dispose of the material. A notification for bids was published in the Daily Herald and on the Geneva, City of Geneva, website. Three bids were received and opened on March 17, 2025, with Stewart Spreading Inc. submitting the low bid for fiscal year '26. Stewart Spreading has performed biosolids disposal for Geneva in the past, and staff has been satisfied with their work. And I would note again that the recommendation, while the bid was for several years, the recommendation is only to accept the bid for the one year. There's a lot of legislation out there that is changing on a daily basis, and so we don't want to commit to future years until we know what that legislation and what that impact would have on our biosolids disposal. But if you still need more information, we do have our award-winning Water Division Superintendent, Bob Van Gescam, with us.
Any questions or comments from the council or from the committee? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3E, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick Inc. for wetlands management services for Eagle Brook and On Brentwood's Pond subdivisions in an amount not to exceed $45,200. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor?
Second.
Pashki.
Okay. So the fiscal year '26 budget provides funding within the Eagle Brook and On Brentwood's Pond SSAs to perform wetland management services. The current provider, Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick HLR, has performed the service since maintenance activity was assumed by the city in 2011. Included in the packet is HLR's proposal, including second and third-year renewal options at the fiscal year '25 rates. Staff, local homeowners, and the Eagle Brook Golf Course owners have been pleased with the previous work and the responsiveness to issues, and recommend that the city extend the contract through fiscal year '26. And with us, we have Director Babica, New Grandaddy, twice over, to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3F, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with, wait, did I, oh, yeah. Start again. Consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick Inc. to complete the fiscal year '26 water treatment plant wetlands management agreement in an amount not to exceed $23,600. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kilburg. Seconded by Mayor.
Okay. So this is same song, different verse. This is, again, is to provide wetland management services at the water treatment plant. HLR has performed this service since the maintenance activity was assumed by the city in 2012. So again, you have a proposal for second and third-year renewal options at the fiscal year '25 rates, and the wastewater, excuse me, the water treatment plant wetlands consist of approximately 19 acres and two ponds. Staff has been pleased with their previous work and responsiveness to issues, and recommend the city extend the contract through fiscal year '26. And again, additional questions may be directed towards Director Babica.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the committee? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 3G, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a service agreement with Clark Environmental Mosquito Management Inc. to conduct the fiscal year '26 mosquito abatement program in an amount not to exceed $56,444. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Pashki. Seconded by Marx. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So the fiscal year '26 budget provides $60,000 in the general fund to conduct mosquito abatement throughout the city. The current provider, Clark Environmental, has verified that the optional renewal rate offered in fiscal year '25 is still valid for fiscal year '26. Clark Environmental has conducted mosquito abatement for the city since 2015, and staff is confident in their ability to continue to provide this service. Included in the packet and online with the meeting questions were copies of FAQ pages from the CDC, IDPH, and Kane County Health Department, and other information relating to the mosquito abatement program. And again, our expert in the room this evening is Director Babica.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Alderperson Marx and Alderperson Kilburg.
Rich, I could be missing this in previous years, but is this the first time that we're seeing this helicopter larval control, where they're going to use a helicopter in some areas?
No, it's been a standard practice. It's just, it just really hasn't been noticed.
Because it's really just for the flood area. I mean, it's not when they go through and spray, I know that, and I want to make sure people realize that when they do the actual spraying at night that we send the notices out. This is more just some of the areas that always have water, correct?
There are open expanses where staff cannot readily or safely access them to apply the granular treatment.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
It's just a delivery system.
Right. It is. I agree. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Alderperson Kilburg. I think you, no?
No.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, sensing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Rich. We are on to item four, public comment. Any other public comments? Didn't happen at the previous meeting. Seeing none. Onto new business. Item five. Any new business from the committee? Alderperson Kilburg.
I've had the chance to serve on a Fermilab Committee, Assistance Advisory Committee for several years, and March meeting, I had an opportunity to share or be a part of a presentation by Greg Stephens, who is the Chief Operating Officer at Fermi. Recently, they had an opportunity, or he had an opportunity to present to the Batavia City Council, and I guess I was wondering if the council would be open to having him come and give a brief presentation to the Geneva City Council on developments at Fermi. Obviously, many of you are aware of the fact they had a layoff last year, reduction in force, and with the changes in the administration, I think it would be beneficial. They are an economic engine in the Fox Valley, and I think it would be appropriate to extend an invitation to have him be a part of one of our meetings and provide us with a brief presentation, maybe 10 minutes or 15 minutes at the most. Anyone opposed to that?
I would enjoy it.
Okay. Thank you. If we could schedule that sometime over the next couple of months, I think that would be great. Thank you.
It'd be nice if it could be while I'm still here, but...
Okay. You don't have to say it.
You can come.
I can come, yeah.
You are welcome.
Always welcome.
Any other, under new business? No? Item six, adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Marx. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
That's the last one.